Ladies and gentlemen, as I've mentioned before, we're having a bit of a technology issue. It has to do with our projector. I won't bore you with the details. It's fair to say Superintendent Scanlon is trying to help us. He's now looking for a different projector up at Starkweather. But in the meantime, rather than wait while Russ and I, Russ Hapton, the vice-chair of Planning Commission, we were going to supplement what we were going to say to start with slides. We'll start just voicing. And if these slides come eventually, then we'll be worn out. We don't want to take any more time, okay? Good evening. My name is Richard Tomrants. I'm chairman of Westtown Planning Commission. Thank you all for your attendance at this special meeting of the Westtown Planning Commission on October 7th, 2019. To the representatives of the Robinson family, to the Robinson family as well as Toll Brothers, welcome too. For the record, let it be noted that six of our seven members of the Planning Commission members are here. Elaine Adler unfortunately had a virus and she has a cough. And as she said herself, oh wait, I see. Can I wait? What do you want me to do? Say again? Okay, hold on a second. Well, think of this as a rehearsal. We'll start and we'll continue now. And then if the slides begin, then as I said, we'll be worn out. Benny Van De Lane is unable to be here. With us here, actually not with us at this moment because he's at our township building also looking for a projector, is Will Etheridge. He's our finance director. And Kristen Camp, who's the partner of Buffy Bryan, who is the planning commissioner's legal counsel. Before we get to the agenda tonight, as a matter of course, we do this at every meeting, I'm going to ask everyone to stand. And I'm going to ask Toll Brothers and Andrew Seaman to lead us in the pleasure, please. Andrew, thank you. It seems just like yesterday that I began a meeting just like this with essentially the same players, several hundred interested parties in attendance. And the following thought then, as I have now. I wish we weren't here. I wish we never had to be here. And perhaps if matters have been handled differently over the decades, who knows what might have happened? Maybe we wouldn't have needed to be here. Where today, the very future of Crebilly Farm, the iconic centerpiece of Westtown Township, will again be under the microscope. Where I grew up, the question we were frequently asked in school, was this a case of "C'est plus la chance, c'est plus les mêmes choses." The more things change, the more they remain the same. To be sure, whatever we learned tonight, this is not the case. This is not "c'est plus la chance, c'est plus les mêmes choses." In other words, so that from the very start, we're all on the same page. Tonight is not a repeat of the first time, the first submission by Toll that eventually was turned down by the township and as most are aware, ended up in court and is awaiting a decision. Instead, this is a completely separate submission by Toll and will be treated as such by the Planning Commission. Why they took this step, I will leave for Toll to explain if they wish. Or if they decide not to do so, I will ask our legal counsel to explain. But before then and before we hear from Toll, there's a great deal of relevant background to be covered to ensure again, everyone is on the same page. And this begins with tonight's agenda. Tonight's agenda started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome and introductions. You're going to hear the rules of the road for tonight's meeting. You're going to hear the Planning Commission's mandate, the Planning Commission review, the planning development process, the conditional use process. And how did we get here? The history of Crebilly's development efforts. There's a high-level timeline today that you're going to hear. Initial comments by each of the members of the Planning Commission. A presentation of the proposal by Toll Brothers. After which, there'll be questions and comments from the Planning Commission and expert consultants, if the expert consultants decide to do so. And then you as well, and have been asked by several people several times over the last couple of weeks, the answer is yes, there will be opportunity for questions and comments from the public. And then we'll end. Presently, we're scheduled to end at 10:30.
Good evening and welcome. Guess it's good to see many faces from last time. Welcome to new people. Before you, on the stage here, is the Westtown Planning Commission. Dick Tomrants is our chairman. I'm the vice-chair. Elaine, who is not here. And then Jim Lee, he's down. Jim, we raise your hand. Jim. Steve Rhodey. Jack Gambit. And our newest member is Kevin Smith. Will, are you still in the building? Westtown planning director is Will Etheridge. He does a lot of the running around for the Planning Commission, coordination between the township and us. Yeah, there's our paperwork and gets information out to us that I'm not five weeks in cases. And then Kristen Camp, who's our solicitor for this project. We get a solicitor when we think we need one, when we need to request one. And finally, we have the Toll Brothers representatives who are down here in the front. So, rules of the road. And this is for all meetings, not just this one. Come prepare. If you have things you're going to ask consultants with the Planning Commission or solicitors, please come prepare so that you ask intelligent relative questions. Be constructive. Be respectful of others and their opinions. Because everything you hear, you may not agree with. Listen to what they have to say. Please keep your sidebar conversations down to a minimum and silence your cell phones. Please try to be respectful to who's doing the presentation, who's explaining something, of no shout-outs. When we get to the point of asking questions and we ask you to come up to the mic, let's try to limit repetitiveness of questions. If you've already heard a question that's similar to yours, it doesn't need to be asked a second time. We want to give our Westtown residents priority because they are the ones affected by this. And then remember, this is a judicial process. This is a formal process from the beginning to end. So, we cannot contact the board. And we ask that you as residents, don't contact the board directly to discuss this hearing. The mandate of the Planning Commission. So, what we are here to do is determine how or whether the submission from Toll is consistent with our 2001 Township Growth Management Plan, which we just updated and was approved in March of 2019. The Westtown Open Space Plan and Recreation Plan and the Physical Development Attache. What does the Planning Commission supervisors and you as residents who provide input want the township to become? The Planning Commission will also make recommendations regarding conditions that we submit to the board and which they review to become part of their ongoing conditional use hearing. So, we submit recommendations. The Planning Commission will utilize all of the resources we have available. We have you as residents. We have other committees, the Parks and Rec, Historic. They all provide input. All our planning experts and consultants. Civil engineers, sewer consultants, traffic. Police and fire provide input. Historic people regarding the buildings that are on the property. The Chester County Planning Commission and the Westchester School.
The Planning Commission is comprised of seven township residents who are volunteer panel appointed by the Board of Supervisors to serve as an advisory body on issues of land use. The Planning Commission's mandate is to advise. We do not make the final decision. We make recommendations to the board on issues of land use, land development and subdivision, ordinance amendments, zoning and the comprehensive plan. This special meeting of the Planning Commission is the first meeting where Toll's conditional use application that proposes the development of the Crebilly Farm with a residential development using something called a flexible development standards in the zoning ordinance will be reviewed. We are going to explain that. The PC meetings will be held on a regular basis. We're going to be updating them for the benefit of the applicant, the Planning Commission and those that may be impacted by the development of Crebilly Farm. It is our understanding that tonight, after tonight's presentation, Toll will not be attending any future meetings. We will ask him to explain that when it gets there. The process is defined, the planning and development process is defined by the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code and Westtown Township's zoning ordinance. All municipalities in Pennsylvania must follow this code. An application from a developer submitted to the township, the township staff reviews the application for completeness and then accepts. The plan is given to township consultants to review and comment, such as traffic, historic, sewer, lighting, and that's just part of it. The Planning Commission then reviews the plan for consistency with the township comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance requirements for a flexible development. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the conditional use application and if appropriate, request that conditions be approved or imposed on the approval.
The board will review the PC's recommendations and the consultant review letters. And after a public hearing process, they will re-render a decision on the application. The board must approve the application unless there is substantial credible evidence that the proposed development will have a more negative impact on public health, safety and welfare than you would ordinarily expect from such a development. The township must make a ruling within 45 days of the close of the evidentiary hearings unless the applicant has granted an extension to the township. So, what is the conditional use? The zoning approval for specific use, which must be approved by the Board of Supervisors after a public hearing. In other words, there are things you can do without a hearing, like, you know, add to your house. But you can't just go out and create a big development without additional approval by the township. The Board of Supervisors already made a determination that a residential development of single-family in attached towns, towns. Our design with the flexible development criteria is an appropriate use of the AC and R1 district by conditional use approval. So, Crebilly Farms is an AC/R1 district. So, the township, by giving it that designation, has already sort of said, yes, we're okay with some houses and we're okay with some towns. Toll is utilizing the flexible development option permitted by the zoning ordinance. That gives some flexibility into how the land is used and where it is used. The applicant has the burden of demonstrating compliance with the ordinances. So, as I said, Toll is utilizing the flexible development option. Permitted by zoning and requesting additional...
How does a CU work? Public hearings are held by the board within 60 days of receipt of application. The applicant, this is Toll, has not granted an extension of time for the board to open the hearing and allow the Planning Commission and consultants to review the plans. Those recognized by the board as having what are called party status may present testimony and witnesses. A property owner who owns land in close proximity to Crebilly proposed for development and who may be affected by the application may be granted party status. Evidence such as documents and sworn testimony are entered into the record. Now, anybody here who thinks that they should be given or granted party status, I would like you to put this down on your phone or on a piece of paper. You have to attend the meeting of the board on this coming Monday at Ruston, beginning at 6 o'clock. And that's part of, that's the Board of Supervisors meeting. If you want or believe that you should have party status, that'll be explained by the legal counsel. It'll be explained by the legal counsel to the board that night. You're going to go through a process and then you'll either be granted it or not. But if you are not at that meeting, then you can't be given or be considered for party status. So, please remember, the date is next Monday, beginning at 6:00 PM. If you had party status last time, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get party status this time. So, again, just the likelihood is you would be, possibly. But there's no assurance. So, the question would be for yourselves, if you think you deserve it, put it down for next Monday, beginning at 6:00. It'll go from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. If you can't make next Monday's meeting, for whatever reason...
They did advertise this at 7:00.
It's 6:00.
Well, I probably have presence at 7:00 and so we need clarification now.
Say again? Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. So, guys, you decide what you want and then we'll...
How it was advertised to? It's now passing. Yeah, advertised to start at 7:00, must start at 7:00.
Guess what? We're beginning at 7:00, next Monday. And if you can't make next Monday's meeting at 7:00, then you have to be at the following meeting of the board. And that would be on...
November... November 19th.
November 19th.
That ends at 6:00 PM.
So, those are your two dates. I know. Hey, listen, I don't run the township. So, whatever you guys decide, if the applicant's saying at 7:00...
It's whatever was advertised in the newspaper, which was done by the township's solicitor. We will confirm that. I thought that was 7:00 PM. The applicant's counsel said it's 7:00 PM. We will confirm that and the website will be clear tomorrow what time it starts. We believe it's 7:00 PM at Ruston.
Okay. Sorry about the confusion.
Okay. So, in a conditional use meeting, a formal hearing. Okay. There is a, it's a formally recorded meeting. There is a court reporter in attendance who takes every note, every word by whoever takes, whoever says. The proposed uses must be consistent with the comprehensive plan, although the comprehensive plan is not a binding agreement. The written decision by the township must be issued within 45 days of whatever the final hearing date ends up being. If the use is approved, the applicant can then proceed to file the land development plans that are consistent with the board's decision. So, if the board has things they want to see in the plan, if Toll is agreeing to those, they would be in the plan and then the land development process would start. Two examples of recent conditional uses that we've had are the Westtown Woods development, right down there off of 202 by the billboard. And the Westtown School athletic field lights, which hasn't been resolved yet. Both of those are conditional use hearings.
The current timeline reads like this. Okay? An application was submitted to the township by Toll on August 16. The application was accepted by the Board of Supervisors on September 6. The first Planning Commission meeting is tonight. The second Planning Commission meeting will be two Mondays from now. The third Planning Commission meeting, if needed, will be on November 7. And the fourth, if it's needed, will be on December, in December. Or on November 19, I believe, or 18. The board meetings are going to be held contemporaneously. And I can ask Kristen to explain why it is that the Planning Commission and the board are having meetings at the same time. And I think I'll ask her to explain that now.
So, under the municipality's planning code, which is the state law that governs the process for zoning approvals, under the conditional use section, once an applicant files the application for conditional use, which this application is, the Board of Supervisors, who's the governing body that acts as the judge on the application, they have to start the hearing within 60 days of receipt of complete application. And the only way that they can start it, that they are given a waiver of that is if the applicant agrees to extend the timeframe to hold the hearing. Toll Brothers is not willing to do that. Give this a second and go around for this. So, the board is required to start that hearing Monday night, which is within the 60-day timeframe. The state law states that if the hearing is not commenced within that 60 days, there's a deemed approval of the application. So, there's very significant consequences if the hearing does not start within those 60 days. Which is why the Board of Supervisors is going to go ahead and start the process. They're going to do what they did last time at the first hearing and they're going to request if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to be a party to the hearing. So, that process will take some time. And after all the parties are, people are given party status or denied party status based on whether it's outstanding or not and based on whether the applicant objects, then the applicant will proceed with the presentation of their case. And it'll all be for a court reporter and they'll present whatever sworn testimony they think is necessary to establish their right to the conditional use. After the applicant presents all of their evidence, and I don't know how long that will take, then anybody who's a party will be given an opportunity to present witnesses and evidence that they would like. At the conclusion, after all the parties are given an opportunity to present their evidence, the record is closed and the Board of Supervisors is given 45 days to render a decision. And again, there's no leeway given to that 45-day timeframe unless the applicant agrees to an extension of time. If they don't agree to an extension of time and the board does not render the decision within 45 days, the state law says once again, there's a deemed approval. So, the state law wants to make sure that the municipalities don't sit on applications and delay the process. So, there's timeframes built into the laws.
The next part that we're going to have, that you're going to hear in a couple of minutes, I've asked each of the Planning Commissioners to have some opening comments. After which Toll Brothers will give its presentation. The Planning Commission will have some questions and comments based on what we hear in Toll's presentation. And then the public will have an opportunity for questions and comments as well. So, I'm going to begin with Kevin. If you have any opening comments, I'd appreciate it. Jim? Benny, more opening comments?
The only comments that I have is, it would fear the initial review of the plans will fear that like a decision that Toll has combined with approximately half of the...
Yeah, I hear you.
We all want to get it.
Sorry. Would it fear the Toll and the new plan are to revive the plan? That's combined with... Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Only take a second here. I used to say that Toll has agreed to incorporate more than half of the requirements that we asked for. And we'll see that with the presentation. That's all I've got now. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. My name's Steve Rhodey. I've been on the Planning Commission for six years. Looking forward to seeing what Toll has to present to us and how we juxtaposition between the last submitted. I've had the pleasure to work on prior two iterations of this project of evolution, if you will. And looking forward to the same year that I'm going to.
Jeff?
Thank you. My name is Jeff McCollough. I'm eligible due to the Planning Commission. I was not on the Planning Commission at the last conditional use hearing for the Toll Crebilly application. It's my view that there is something missing, something important that is missing from the current conditional use application. And I believe that the applicant needs to affirmatively evaluate possible environmental impacts associated with the project in order to determine if any significant impacts will occur. This is a mandate that is in addition to the obligations in the municipality's planning code. And it's found in the Constitution of Pennsylvania in Article 1, Section 27, which is known as the Environmental Rights Amendment. In other words, among other things, I think the applicant needs to identify possible significant environmental impacts associated with the project. And it's my view, this is my view as a Planning Commission member and a citizen of Westtown Township, that this is required by our ordinances as well as by the Constitution in Article 1, Section 27. So, it's my view that the applicant must conduct a study in advance to identify current cumulative and future effects of adverse environmental impacts of all activities associated with the proposed use. The study must identify and assess directed and indirect environmental effects, it can be negative or positive. And it must identify and assess impacts that are immediate, short-term or long-term and which impacts can be incremental, compounding over time or developed over the passage of years. They must determine whether and to what degree the effects or impacts will infringe unreasonably upon or violate the protected rights and values in the Constitution, which includes at a minimum air, water, scenic, historic, natural, aesthetic values. Or unreasonably cause actual or likely deterioration of the protected values. If the study identifies significant or a reasonable impact on the protected values, then it's my view that the applicant must reduce them to insignificant or reasonable levels. If the applicant cannot do that, then I believe the township loses its rights to deny the application. My view as a Planning Commission member that this type of evaluation is authorized by the Supreme Court in the cases of Pennsylvania Environmental Defense Foundation, which was decided in 2017. This case indicates that the duties contained in Article 1, Section 27 of the Constitution apply to municipalities and townships. And they must ensure that the values set forth in the Environmental Rights Amendment are protected. This was affirmed in recent decisions of the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court. And municipalities clearly have responsibilities under the Pennsylvania Constitution and must account for environmental features or other protective features of the effective locale. This was affirmed in Frederick decision and most recently in Andover Associates. So I am looking for this information and I believe it is incumbent upon the planning commission to have this information as well as the board supervisors to order a decision.
Russ? First I'd like to say today it's good to see Toll and the Robinsons here tonight. Unfortunately, Toll and Robinson are here tonight. I really, I'm struggling with this. This plan, this plan being proposed, is not very different than the plan we just discussed three years ago. Yes, there's a connector road, but that connector road was discussed by the planning commission three years ago. I'm just very disappointed. I'm disappointed in the applicant because they have made no effort to work with the township and the planning commission to develop a plan that is compatible and acceptable to all parties, not just Toll Brothers. I believe the efforts to put 319 houses on this property is just excessive. I also believe you can't fix the traffic problem. I don't even think they can. So if that's the basis for approval, then there can't be an approval. I look forward to hearing Toll's plan, but I have no expectations.
During the introductory background that Russ and I attempted to recite, where all of us are today with regards to Toll and Corbilly, what it is and when and how it got to be where it is. But what about why? Why did it have to come to this? It's a question I personally wrestled with since for what seems forever. And that's well before Toll. So to be fair, this is not about Toll. Rather, it's about something much closer to many of us, about our community and about West Town. So why? I think I found the answer to why several months ago, in part or in whole, by total accident. Something someone said that resonated in ways the person who spoke quite possibly didn't even realize what we were hearing. It was at a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the planning commission. Something the planning commission had recommended and something that should take place every quarter. In any event, the subject matter had to do with the future of the township. Its strengths, its vulnerabilities, everyone's thoughts and recommendations for the future. The discussion was interesting and as you might expect, there was considerable debate. But it was useful and productive and it was an exercise that almost any enterprise or not-for-profit goes through and one West Town should undertake regularly, as do most of our municipal neighbors. Then it was time for a public comment. There were not many, and the first for me that at least provided answers for that question, why? Here's what that person said. You know, we've been residents for decades and I can tell you that I don't even know why you're having this meeting. This township has been around for 300 years. It's worked well for 300 years. So why are you talking about fixing something that isn't broken? 300 years. For me, there it was and there it remains to this very day. One strain of leadership thought that finds comfort with the status quo, that prefers not to be bothered with the predictabilities and uncertainties about the future. And there's another strain of leadership thought, however. It's a thought that's comfortable in dealing with ambivalence, with self-examination, with asking questions such as like, what if? And what can we do about it before it's lost? It's so much easier to not bother ensuring you're thinking about the future and to do little or nothing about it. It's so much harder, so much more challenging, doing whatever you can to being prepared for the unexpected. On a personal basis, I live here, my wife and I have lived here for 33 years. I love this place. And for me, Corbilly has always been West Town's masterpiece, a scenic centerpiece that melded our past with each passing generations today, right up to today. But who knows what it will be tomorrow? I keep asking myself why leadership over the years did little or nothing to do what it could or at least could try to do, or what might have been able to preclude what has happened on our watch. Why didn't those leaders heed what Samuel Beckett weren't in waiting for Godot? Quote, "Let us do something while we have the chance." To that person of 300 years fame and to anyone who asks why, I think there are people like them who say, "Why?" You see things as they are and say why. And I and other people continue to dream things that never were and say, "Why not?" Toll Brothers, you're up.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Greg Edelman. I'm here on behalf of Toll Brothers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here again this evening. But I'd like to explain to both the planning commission and to the public why we are here again. The only reason we're here is because the township set forth and put something into motion in terms of a zoning amendment that took away both Toll's rights and the landowner's rights. And under Pennsylvania law, contrary to what everyone thinks here, property rights are protected. Article 1, Section 1 is the cornerstone of the entire Commonwealth's Constitution. That section permits a property owner to continue to file and seek approvals in accordance with the laws that are effective at the time in which they file an application.